This regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I really wanted to extend a warm welcome to everyone who is here and present and to our television viewers. Thanks for venturing out in the rain. Appreciate you guys being here. I would just ask right now if you would please turn your cell phones to silent if you have not already done so. And we really do appreciate the time that you've taken to join us and for your interest in Waco ISD. Este Junto Regular de los de Waco ISD está convocada, les extendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presente y los que nos observan por televisión. También quiero compartir que todas las conferencias estén disponibles en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En ese página pueden escoger su idioma así toda la información que fue descubrida está disponible para todos. Por favor apájar su teléfono celular y les agradecimos el tiempo que compartimos con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD. If Mr. Gilery and Mr. Davis would meet me down in front of the dais, we're going to take our oath of office. (Applause). As an oath of public I'm honored to administer the oath of office, please raise your right hand. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, please be offered the oath of office. I would state your name to someone who swears.
I swear to God.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Trustees.
Of the Office of Trustees.
Of the Waco Independent School District.
Of the Waco Independent School District.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long, we go.
So long, we go.
Thank you very much for coming out of the way. We're going to take some quick pictures with our families. Okay, sorry about that. We are going to, if everyone is okay, we're going to go ahead and move item number three, public comments, to after our number four, moment of silence, pledge of allegiance, and special recognition. So we're going to actually move to agenda items, but we'll... So public comments will be after our special recognitions, if everyone's okay with that. Great, okay. So if you would pause with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, and/or some meditation. Moving on to item number five, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the reorganization of the Board of Trustees. I will entertain a motion for 5A.
I would like to make a motion that we keep Stephanie Cordewig as our president, Jose Vedanya as our vice president, and Mr. Jeremy Davis as our secretary.
Second.
Great, thank you. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Gilery?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
Nope.
Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Davis and Mr. Vedanya, on president and vice president. Moving on to item number six, special recognition. Oh, we didn't do our pledge of allegiance. Let's do our pledge of allegiance, so sorry about that. Can we get our pledge leaders down here? Sorry, it doesn't say that.
And our pledge leaders tonight are Bria Dugas and Emiliano Estrada, both of Parkdale Elementary School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bria is a fifth grader and her favorite subject is reading. She enjoys playing volleyball, painting nails, styling hair, and applying makeup. She also loves singing and gymnastics and would like to be an actor or vocalist. Bria is the daughter of Lakendra and Brian Dugas. Emiliano is in the fourth grade. His favorite subject is math and he enjoys playing soccer, drawing, nitrotyping, and collecting Pokemon cards. When Emiliano grows up, he wants to create games for learning. Emiliano is the son of Angelica Rodriguez and Jose Estrada. And Crystal Collier serves as the principal of Parkdale Elementary, who's with us tonight. We now recognize Cedar Ridge Elementary fifth grader Brittany Grahava. Brittany's artwork was selected by the Texas Art Education Association for display at the Bullock Texas State History Museum. Brittany's art was chosen from submissions from all over the state to be one of the very best, and it featured a giant pumpkin with a starry night background. Our next honorees come to us from the Tennyson Atlas Academy. Congratulations to Henry Ochoa, a sixth grader, who was a state qualifier in the exhibit category at the Texas History Day State Contest after taking first place in the Heart of Texas Regional History Fair. Henry's exhibit featured the 1918 flu pandemic, and he picked that because, well, nobody really talks about it, and it wiped out a third of the world's population. He thinks people should know. Congratulations also to Caroline Taub, a seventh grader at Tennyson Middle School Atlas Academy. She was also a state qualifier in the research paper category at the state competition after taking second place at the regional history fair event. Caroline's research was all award-winning. These students are accompanied tonight by their teacher, Dr. Keith Reich, research teachings and elective taught within the Atlas program. Congratulations to Emmanuel Zuniga of University High School. Emmanuel was selected to receive the Dell Scholarship. Dell scholars feature first-generation college students who are chosen based on success in college readiness programs in high school. Emmanuel will be attending Texas A&amp;M University and majoring in biology. Congratulations, Emmanuel, a Dell scholar. We would now like to recognize our finance team from University High School. Not all of the team could be with us tonight because they have other commitments, but on the team are Javier Hernandez, Angel Rodriguez, Renee Ravelas, and Iber Flores. Now, listen to this. They defeated more than 700 teams on the district level and over 4,000 teams in the state contest to be named the Texas winners in the stock market game, which teaches students financial literacy and how to create investment portfolios. They were given $100,000 virtual money to spend on the New York Stock Exchange. They virtually traded stocks and purchased what they would like. Their team finished the game with $127,754.92, easily beating out all other teams across the state. They are instructed by teacher Teresa Norris, who is with us here tonight. Thank you, Ms. Norris. And now we would like to congratulate our students who were selected by the Texas High School Coaches Association for Academic All-State Awards. This is the UIL's highest-degree honor awarded to students for excelling both academically and in athletics. Our first honoree is from Waco High School, Alexis Hookum. Alexis earned Academic All-State Elite in girls' soccer. She is also the varsity captain of the team and this year's Waco High School salutatorian. Jonathan Middleton also comes to us from Waco High School. He earned Academic All-State Honorable Mention in boys' soccer. Samuel Everett was selected for Academic All-State Elite in tennis but could not be with us this evening, but congratulations to Sam. Our next student-athletes come from University High School. Please help me congratulate Lauren Sorato. She made the list not just once, but twice in two different sports. Academic All-State Honorable Mention in girls' soccer and honorable mention in softball. She is coached by the Syntex Female Soccer Coach of the Year, Natalie Gutierrez, who is with us here tonight. Now we recognize Daniel Angelo. No. Nicholas Vaquera. Emmanuel Zuniga. This Dell scholar is recognized this time as an Academic All-State second team in boys' soccer. And now we recognize neighbor Lopez. Mr. Lopez is recognized as Academic All-State Honorable Mention in baseball. And this next young man, you better look fast because he's going to blow right by you. Miles Redding is honored tonight as Academic All-State Honorable Mention in track and field. Miles also qualified for the Texas UIL Track and Field Meet and captured fourth place in the 800-meter race out of all competitors in the state. And now we recognize our Waco High School student-athletes who qualified to compete at the state powerlifting competition. Let's recognize senior lifter Sarah Dix. Sarah competed in the 242-pound weight class and finished eighth in her division in the Junior lifter Dwayne Simmons competed in the 148-pound weight class. And listen to this. This young man is only a junior, and he set school records on all three of his lifts at the competition. He finished number 25 out of more than 50 lifters at the state competition. And Waco High senior lifter Atticus Miller competed in the 165-pound weight class. He finished in the top 20 out of more than 40 lifters. Listen to this. He deadlifted 600 pounds for the heaviest pull in the 165-pound class. And the Waco High powerlifting team before you is coached by teacher Nathan Vogel. We're now ready to recognize our Waco ISD community partners for the month of May. We couldn't decide, they were both so amazing, that we chose two this month, and that is especially in line with graduation, as they have helped us make this possible. We recognize tonight McLennan Community College and Texas State Technical College. McLennan Community College supports the district's dual-credit programs through the Future Heroes Academy and Future Educators Academy, and serves approximately 300 dual-credit students every year. More than 150 Waco ISD students have earned their associate degrees before their high school graduations. The McLennan and Rising Star scholarships are awarded to the top 20% of Waco ISD graduates. Decision Day celebrations are held for graduating seniors. The school also conducts campus tours entirely in Spanish for our English-language learners. The award is accepted tonight by Dr. Johnette McCowen, Karen Clark, and Londa Caravoe. Thank you for your support of our students. Thank you, McLennan Community College. We now recognize Texas State Technical College. TSTC has served more than 120 Waco ISD dual-credit students over the last two years. A TSTC representative provides guidance on the board of Waco ISD's Greater Waco Advanced Manufacturing Academy. TSTC provides $10,000 scholarships to Guam graduates who are pursuing more education with the college. The award is accepted tonight by Provost Beth Wooton and Casey Darnell. Thank you so much, Texas State Technical College. Another round of applause for our community partners. Thank you for your support. And we now recognize Sergeant Larry Martinez of the Waco ISD Police Department and the Sergeant Martinez and his police K-9 Dalton have assisted with 900-plus service calls, more than 50 K-9 presentations, and responded to inquiries, invitations, and pleas for assistance in many departments in McLennan County, including Waco, Hewitt, Larina, McGregor, and other municipalities. Together, Sergeant Martinez and his K-9 have confiscated more than 70 pounds of illegal narcotics, uncovered 15 illegal weapons, and seized more than $20,000 in drug money, assisting in apprehending five dangerous criminals, locating two missing senior citizens, and ensuring one missing child was returned safely to his family. In addition to these incredible accomplishments, Sergeant Martinez cites doing presentations with elementary school students. It's his fondest memory of his K-9 because he is instilling good citizenship in young children, and that's where it truly begins. As social and emotional learning has become a staple in public education, Sergeant Martinez and his K-9 Dalton have brightened the lives of many students, softened the tears on the faces of elementary, middle, and high school students, and given them hope for their future. Tonight, Dalton is officially retired from the Waco ISD Police Department after years And we get to keep Sergeant Martinez, but as for Dalton, doggone, we're going to miss A lot of people have asked us what's going to happen to Dalton now that he's going into retirement. Sergeant Martinez has adopted him, and so he will spend his retirement lounging around Martina the Martinez home, so... I understand his first vacation's going to be to the beach, so... We are now ready to recognize our secondary teachers who have earned the teacher incentive allotment. This allotment is awarded to very few in the state because it has very difficult criteria to earn it. It is awarded based on improving academic levels and closing the achievement gap. I am happy to share with you that nearly 200 Waco ISD teachers, that's about a fourth of our teaching staff, have earned the teacher incentive allotment. If you want to win with Waco, it's right here in our classroom with our teachers. So we are ready to recognize them now. We have Caesar Adame from Waco High School. Mr. Adame is a Spanish teacher, and he also coaches, and he is being honored tonight at the recognized level. Our next honoree is Nora Burnham, also of Waco High School. Mrs. Burnham is being recognized at the recognized level. She teaches social studies. Our next honoree is Shaniqua Douglas from Tennyson Middle School. Mrs. Douglas serves students as a PE teacher and also a coach. She is being recognized at the exemplary level. Our next honoree is Jacob Garcia, also of Tennyson Middle School. Mr. Garcia is a fine arts teacher, and he is being awarded at the exemplary level. Our next honoree is Susan Giddings of Waco High School. Mrs. Giddings teaches English, and she is being honored at the recognized level. Our next honoree, may I say drum roll, please. He is the band director at University High School, Archie Hatton IV. Mr. Hatton is being recognized at the recognized level. Our next honoree is David Hurtado from Waco High School. Mr. Hurtado teaches physical education, and he's being honored at the recognized level. Our next honoree is Riley Jorgas. She's being honored tonight as an English teacher at Waco High School. And Miss Jorgas earned the recognized level. Our next honoree also comes from Waco High School, Alisa Keen. Miss Keen teaches English, and she's being honored tonight at the recognized level. And another drum roll for our band assistant director at Tennyson Middle School, Amber Mrs. Meeks is being honored tonight at the recognized level. Our next honoree is Amanda Moss of Waco High School. Mrs. Moss teaches business education. She's being honored tonight at the recognized level. Our next honoree is Sherry Prather from Tennyson Our next honoree is Sherry Prather from Tennyson Middle School. Mrs. Prather teaches science, and she is being honored at the exemplary level. Our next honoree is Judith Price of Cesar Chavez Middle School. Ms. Price teaches math, and she's being honored at the exemplary level. Our next honoree is Ruston Ressinger. Mr. Ressinger comes from the Greater Waco Advanced Manufacturing Academy, where he is a CTE teacher. He is honored at the recognized level. Our next honoree is Kim Rodriguez of Cesar Chavez Middle School. Ms. Rodriguez teaches science, and she is honored tonight at the recognized level. Our next honoree is Martin Schwinger from Waco High School. Mr. Schwinger is a business certification teacher, and he's being honored at the recognized level. Our next honoree is Tamara Smathers from University High School. Mrs. Smathers is an English teacher, and she's being honored at the recognized level. And a final drum roll for our band director from Tennyson Middle School, Kimberly Tucker. Ms. Tucker is being honored at the recognized level. And no pun, but our band teachers really know how to toot their own horn. We would like to share with you that the teacher incentive allotment program in Waco ISD is overseen by Vanessa Ruiz and Dr. Josie Gutierrez, our deputy superintendent. Congratulations to all of our recipients of the Texas Teacher Incentive Allotment. And Madam President, that's all we have.
That doesn't mean we're getting old. Okay, we did not go on to agenda item number three, public comments on agenda item. We did have two people signed up to speak. We had Jocelyn Williams and Marian Wilson. When we have one or more person sign up to speak or one of more of the open agenda items this evening, the board encourages comments about open meeting agenda items from members of the public. Anyone who signed up to speak in advance, sorry, I'm gonna double-check something real quick. The agenda item that is listed is actually a closed session and can't be commented, so it's on. Anyone who has signed up to speak in advance of the meeting in accordance with board procedures will do so in accordance with the law, board policy, and board rules. Board rules require that each speaker's comments pertain to a meeting agenda item. Unless adjusted by the presiding officer, comments by each speaker will be no longer than three minutes per time limit from district's BED local. Please take note of the timer that is displayed on the screen to guide each speaker. When one minute remains, you will hear a chime, and when the allotted time has expired, a buzzer will sound. I have, up first is Ms. Williams. Oh, there you are.
Madam President, I wanted to make a correction. The timer will buzz at 30 seconds. When you have 30 seconds left, the timer will go off.
Thank you for that, Mr. Davis. 30 seconds. We'll have to update that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jocelyn Williams. I'm a community leader in the Waco area and also the president of the J. H. Hines Elementary School PTA. And tonight, I'm here just to talk again with you about my concern about Dr. Cynthia Wise, who is right now the current principal of J. H. Hines, but was asked to resign or be terminated as that principal. I started this journey with you on April 21st, when I sent an email to all of the members of the board, and I want to thank those who replied back, especially Stephanie Kotowig, who we got a chance to meet and talk through my concerns, and I appreciate that time of talking with you. But what I wanted to do tonight was just to kind of ask you to all kind of think about, possibly in your closed session, having a conversation more around this and maybe even reconsidering talking about keeping Dr. Wise as the principal of J. H. Hines. J. H. Hines has had three principals in the last five to six years. Through the collaborative partnership of Waco ISD and Transformation Waco, she was hired to help bring the school up from being an underperforming school to being a performing school or an at-level school. And she has done that and more. We have seen from her leadership and her collaboration with the teachers and the staff, the students, and the families, we've seen improvements in attendance and discipline and the attitude and the behaviors of the students, and most of all, in the academics. You've probably seen all of the data, and we'll have a chance to hopefully go through some of that data once again. We teach our students to talk through their conflicts, to talk through misunderstandings or work on differences. And so I'm asking you, as the board and the superintendent, to kind of sit down with each other and have that open and honest conversation to hopefully come up with a fair resolution of this process or revisiting a fair resolution of this process. J. H. Hines has also went through many different traumas, and with having three principals, it's once again taking, it's like taking a step backwards or taking two steps backwards to get forward. And I feel like that if Dr. Wise, who was deemed to come and do what she has done to bring about the excellence that is expected of all Waco ISD schools, and she has instilled that with families and the students and the community, that she should be allowed to continue to do the work that she has been deemed to do. So again, my ask and my plea is that the superintendent and all of you on the board of trustees, the board of the school department, will consider talking again about this resignation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Williams. Up next, we have Ms. Wilson.
Good evening to the board, the president, to Superintendent Kincaid. I come as a veteran teacher, and when I say "comeback," I mean comeback. I have known every principal at J. H. Hines, and J. H. Hines is over 100 years old. And the only one that I did not personally be able to meet was Mr. James Harry Hines himself. But I am a Clark by genealogy, so Mr. Clark was the second. I worked there under Ms. Helen Bailey. She hired me straight out of college. And why do I give all of that information? Because we've had more principals in the last 15 years than we had in the first 100 years of our existence. And what have we seen because of this? We've seen a decline in student performance. When Dr. Roseanne Stripling was our superintendent, we had over 20 recognized campuses in Waco ISD by TEA. We don't see that kind of student achievement. For the first time in the last 20 years, I felt like J. H. Hines was back on its way to having that kind of academic recognition. Blue Ribbon School, it was in our grass. All I'm asking is that as you look at Dr. Cynthia Wise and what she's done with the students and student body at J. H. Hines and the staff, because even if you look at what you've heard out and about, when you look at the transfer window, it was blank. Because we have gotten together as a team and said, "We can." The children have said, "Yes, we can." When we move a leadership, you cause an instability in what we know to be well. Now, I understand you can't comment in this particular session about it. Some of you have had your mind already made up, and they told me, "Marianne, don't go up there." They told us, "Don't do it. Give up. We not gonna be there." They've already made up their mind. I walked in here saying, "No, there's a possibility." Because we're about student achievement. We're about being better than what we used to be. So I'm gonna ask you to consider it. Consider what has happened and where we've been and where we need to go. Or is this gonna be another opportunity where we could have made a different decision? We could have stepped back and said, "Let's reconsider." But we moved forward because are we really concerned about the students at J. H. Hines in 76704? Dead silence, and that's how the community feels. They won't hear us. They're dead silent. Let's not do that. I believe in you because I cast my vote in every election. Let's continue to believe in you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wilson. I appreciate you guys taking time to come and make comments. Moving on to item number seven, superintendent's report.
All right. Good evening. You can have to excuse me for a little bit of a cough. Okay, I have a couple of items. The first one is graduation, and we're excited about that. Next week is our graduation to celebrate the class of 2024. University high school ceremony will begin at 7:30 PM on Thursday, and that will be May 23rd, I believe. And Waco High School's graduation is scheduled for Friday at 8 o'clock PM, and that's the 24th. Both ceremonies are at the stadium again this year, where we will be enforcing a clear-bag policy. We'll also be using metal detectors again, so we do encourage everyone to come early to get into the gates. Also, we're asking that our board members arrive one hour in advance so that we can get lined up and ready, and we'll be providing dinner for you. Brazis High School will honor its graduates on May 28th at the Antioch Community Church at 6:30 PM. Any questions about graduation? It's what we've been working for. All right, Family Fest, so thinking about next school year. We, it's what we do. We've been preparing for next school year while we're wrapping up this school year. But looking ahead to next school year, we do want to announce that we've set the date for our annual Back to School Family Fest that will be held on Saturday, August 3rd, from 9:00 AM to noon. And that will be at University High School again this year due to the construction of the new Waco High School and just how hard, how difficult it is to get in there. So one single one this year again for another year, and then hopefully the following year we'll have in the new Waco High School. So anyone who is registered, all of our students who register, will receive a voucher for a free clear backpack with school supplies while they last. And once again, we're partnering with the Waco McLennan County Public Health District to provide all school-required immunizations and COVID vaccines to students. All right, last item is the Education Foundation enrichment grants. The Waco Foundation Surprise Patrol had a busy two days, and I think there were some additional add-on days too, to deliver checks to 37 teacher grant recipients. I want to thank our board members who were able to come to one or more of those. This year, the foundation awarded $154,000, bringing the total amount of grants funded over the past decade and a half to nearly $2.2 million. So those are some really impressive numbers, and we're thankful for the incredible generosity and support of our community, the hard work and dedication of the foundation's board, and our community partnership coordinator, Stephanie Hines. And we're looking forward to seeing what our teachers do in the classrooms and all the great experiences that our students will get to have. I did have one more item. Apologize. Want to talk a little bit about the dedication of GW Carver Middle School. We will be celebrating with a dedication event finally on Tuesday, May 28th. That'll be at 11:00 AM, and this one's special. Anytime you open a new building and you get to dedicate it, it's very special. But this, this school has a rich, meaningful history, and I think it's a once-in-a-lifetime honor and something that I'm proud of to celebrate with our community. So looking forward to that, and I hope all of you can attend. Now, the bad news is that our local metalworks artist, while he is nearing the completion of the project that we've all been talking about, may not be able to have it completely installed by that date. But I don't want to delay the dedication of the school any longer. So we're going to move forward with a program. We have students performing, and we have speakers. We have special remarks from several people, as well as some alumni. So I'm excited about that. And then hopefully, when he finishes, then we can do some walkthroughs and get to see that special art project. Any questions?
I just want to take time right now to acknowledge the Education Foundation because $2.2 million is nothing to, I mean, that's a substantial amount of money. And so just really thankful for them to supply these grants for our teachers for enrichment. It really is, does make a difference. And I think it, not only does it make a difference academically, but I think it gives them a boost to let them know, "Hey, we're here, and we want to support you in your, in teaching." And so it's just, I think there's kind of a underlayer of support that I think teachers feel when they get those grants. And so just so thankful for the Education Foundation. That's impressive.
If I can add on, I have the pleasure of being on that board. Stephanie Hines is incredible. Stephanie, if you're watching on television, we salute you. This year, we had an enormous amount of grants written, and it was a pleasure to be able to give this money to incredibly creative and needed to give this money to incredibly creative and needed aspects in each classroom. That it was really incredible to read through all the grants and get to be a part of it. So thank you, guys.
Well, thanks for serving on that board. We appreciate it. Moving on to, did anyone else have anything to say? Moving on to number eight, information items, reports. Mr. Grant, did you have anything? Any questions on any? Mr. Davis, did you have any questions?
No.
Mr. Vedania, did you have any questions?
No.
Mr. Gillery, did you have any questions?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay. Moving on to consent agenda, I will entertain a motion, oh, actually, Mr. Grant, do you have anything you would like pulled?
No.
Mr. Davis, would you like anything pulled?
No.
Mr. Vedania?
No.
Mr. Gillery?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Mr. Patton?
No.
Hearing that, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I move.
Ooh, we'll give it to, we'll give it to Gillery for this first and a second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion, Mr. Grant? Any discussion, Mr. Davis? Any discussion, Mr.? Thank you. Any discussion, Mr. Gillery?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay. We'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to number 10, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding retention bonuses for parent professionals, auxiliary staff, various campus support professionals, counselors, registered nurses, I mean, we're getting everyone in there, athletic trainers, campus-based special education diagnostic assessment professionals, campus administrators, and district, district professionals and administrators. Mr., oh, excuse me, Dr. Lopez.
Madam President and members of the board, Dr. Kincaid. Over the last three years, this board has approved retention incentives using elementary and secondary school emergency funds, known as ESER, to retain qualified staff while addressing the ever-changing economic climate, maintain operations and continuity of services in the district, and combat the learning loss associated with COVID. With the end of ESER funding and a challenging budget fiscal year forecast for this coming year, the administration recommends one final round of retention bonuses. These bonuses continue, continue the bonuses that were provided last August, increasing para and auxiliary bonuses from $500 to $1,000 as outlined below, and adds professional and administrative staff in central office who have not previously received retention bonuses, or excuse me, retention incentives, but are essential to the operations of the district. To retain employees, a final one-time retention bonus is recommended for those returning in the 2024-2025 school year and employed as of the payout date. Temporary employees are not eligible, and those in professional or exempt positions will be, or halftime will be prorated. So this is going to be a long list. Give me a minute here. $1,000 retention bonus for all regularly employed paraprofessional staff in the 201-209 pay grades. $1,000 retention bonus for all regularly employed auxiliary staff in the 302-311 pay grades, with an exception of custodial and cafeteria workers who are members of the 221, 2021 Retention Bonus Cohort Plan approved July 15, 2021. $2,500 retention bonus for all regularly employed campus support professional positions, including instructional specialists, counselors, registered nurses, Guam and Guaca coordinators, high school campus testing specialists, high school at-risk specialists, high school campus parent community involvement specialists, life skill program for student-parent case managers, social-emotional learning specialists, strategic reading specialists, college career military readiness specialists, athletic trainers, high school strength and conditioning coaches, and behavior intervention campus support specialists. $2,500 retention bonus for all regularly employed special education support positions, including diagnosticians, speech-language pathologist, speech-language pathologist assistants, board-certified behavior analyst, licensed specialist in school psychology, occupational therapist, and art facilitators. $2,500 for assistant and associate principals and administrators in residence. $5,000 to $7,500 for principals and deans of Guam and Guaca based on longevity. $3,500 for district-level professionals and administrators and pay grades 101 to 110 who have not received any previous retention bonuses. The estimated cost for these retention bonuses is 1.7 million, almost $1.8 million, and will be paid to the employees in a separate check in September of 2024 before the closeout of the ESER III grant funds. The administration recommends approval of these retention bonuses as presented.
I'd like to add, if you don't mind.
Yes.
We, these are, most of these are continuing what we did last year with the, except for those increases for para and auxiliary and the central office staff who have not received anything. But on top of this, we also have, we're still giving the ones that were previously committed, our classroom teachers, I believe, police officers, there were some other positions. So essentially, we're taking care of everyone in the school district. And, and so the total, we believe, will be around $3.5 to $4 million in all between this and things that you have previously approved. Really significant because, as you know, we have a huge budget deficit and this, these many, for most people in these job categories, these are, these amounts are more than a 3% raise that they would normally get. So we're, we're really pleased to make this recommendation to you all this evening.
Do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Gillery.
So how much of this is, is coming from the, I know ESER's ending this month, how much of that is ESER funds?
100%.
100%. Okay. I thought I heard you say it, but I wanted to make sure.
100%. We're, you know, we had almost $80 million, so we are going to spend every penny. And we have, I feel like we've been really good stewards of that money, done some really nice things for our classrooms and building capacity of our staff to do the work. And these bonuses have been very instrumental in us being able to keep employees in their jobs. And in fact, I, as I went around this spring and spoke at our campuses, I bragged, I said I was only going to brag for a hot minute because turnover rates are high all across the state and all across the area. But we had next to the very lowest turnover rate, teacher turnover rate, in this area. Now, still not worth bragging about for very long because it's still too high and everyone is very high. But I'm very proud of the fact that we've been able to decrease our gap during a very challenging time. And I believe that part of that is because we're taking care of our employees and use some of this money to do that. And so in a very challenging time, this is a really nice thing to be able to do.
Yes, Mr. Patton.
Dr. Lopez, can you tell me specifically, I know we used ESER for a lot of our librarians. Are we still covering the librarians? Have we moved them over to regular budget?
We have.
We have.
For next year.
Excellent. That was just a question I had.
Mr. Ochoa?
Just wanted to make sure we are getting the interpreters, I mean, the interpreters in that list.
Interpreters, I'm going to defer to Dr. Lopez.
They are in this list in the category of 201-209 pay grades.
Perfect. Thanks.
Should have all of those pay grades covered.
We've just about covered every employee.
So teachers got, you know, teachers who have been here since we started, these bonuses have gotten $10,000, paid out over three years. And then the next group of teachers got $5,000, and then we'll have a $2,500 teacher group. Every other professional who got a bonus last year of $2,500 will get another $2,500. So they've gotten five. And then our principals, we paid out based on longevity, so they have gotten up to $7,500. And we have very little turnover in principalships. And, and this will be the first time that our central office administrators have gotten anything.
The, Dr. Kincaid?
Uh huh.
You said the principals, is that, are our APs getting?
APs are in the $2,500 bonus, and they got those last year as well.
Good. Thank you.
I just would like to say I'm really excited about the 500 bumping up to $1,000 for those paraprofessionals and support staff positions. I know they'll be really grateful for it. I appreciate the work on it.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Move that we accept the retention bonuses as presented.
Mr. Gillery is first, thank you. Mr. Patton, second, thank you. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Vedania? Any discussion, Mr. Gillery?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, I'll, we can take a vote. Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I do want to say I'm very thankful that though we have budget cuts and won't be able to do the pay raise, this is from this ESER and the due diligence and stewardship of this administration, we have been able to use ESER funds to give above a 3% pay raise for our staff. And so I really do appreciate the administration taking care of our staff and making sure that they get, wish we could do more, but I'm, thank you. Thank you for doing that. Moving on to item number 11, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding one-time back-to-school supply allowance for teachers and select other classroom professionals. Dr. Kincaid or?
I'm going to let Dr. Lopez.
Oh, Dr. Lopez.
Last year, we were able to provide this allowance for teachers. It was a great bonus for them. Dr. Kincaid really wanted it to happen this year as she went around to all of her meetings, our spring meetings, and said she was going to work hard to make sure we could get it in. And we are asking that you approve this $300 one-time back-to-school supply allowance for all regularly employed teachers, dyslexia specialists, librarians, library media specialists, speech pathologists, assistant speech pathologists, and strategic reading specialists. And it will be paid out in the August 30, 2024 paycheck using ESER III grant funds.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Let's get this thing going. Thank you, Mr. Patton. Whoa, okay, Mr. Davis is giving him away. Okay, we'll give it to Mr. Grant. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Vedania? Any discussion, Mr. Gillery?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
I just want to say one thing. I, I used to work with some teachers who, who wouldn't even have a picture of their wife in their classroom. I mean, just the plainest, most boring classrooms in the world. So the fact that we can provide this, you've been in classrooms where you just, you walk in, you just want to stay there for a long time. I know we have personally a lot of teachers who spend a lot of money on classrooms and things to make kids feel welcome, so I'm really glad that we're doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One question. This is going to be given out August 30?
In the August paycheck.
August paycheck.
Is there any way we could do it for the, the 1st of August?
That's right, our new teachers don't.
I'm just thinking about the money to help set up the classroom.
Haven't, we'll take, we'll take a look at it. Yeah. Talk about it. We, many of them aren't, they don't, you know, our new teachers don't get paid.
Yeah.
Right away. So it would, it makes, you know, we have to have time to set all of that up, and they're not with us, but we can, we can look at that.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'm so thankful we get to do this again. Moving on to item number 12, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding agreement between EOAC and planning Region 12, no, and Waco Independence.
Region 11.
Region 11. Sorry, I was getting confused as to before after. Yes. Dr. Kincaid.
Yeah, I, I can see how that was confusing. That was the first time I had seen that as a part of the EOAC title, but I think that's their official.
Oh.
Corporation title.
Okay.
So we have been discussing the redesign of Brazos and a new partnership with EOAC for an early head start program for zero to three-year-olds to serve our students, the babies of our students. And this would be held at Brazos. This is a lease agreement with EOAC. Basically, we are allowing them to use the space in that facility. They're agreeing to pay for any renovations inside the building that they need to meet for compliance for the program. They're setting up a playground, they're providing meals there for the, for the babies, and, and then they're serving our students. And so we're really excited. Early head start is a great program. This will be the first time we've been able to serve all of our students in Waco ISD who have this need. And I want to thank Daphne Latchison, who's here this evening, for helping with this. She and Ms. Susan Wilson from EOAC worked diligently to make sure that this got to you this evening. And it's my honor to recommend that we, that you approve the agreement as it's written, and I'd like to ask for your authorization to execute it.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. D, ooh, Mr. Davis, he got it. All right, here we go. Mr. Grant, do you have any discussion?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Vedania?
No.
Mr. Gillery?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Welcome, EOAC. We're excited for that partnership. And moving on to item number 13, announcements.
Good evening, President Cordewig, Dr. Kincaid, trustees. As Dr. Kincaid shared in her superintendent's report, we are just one week from celebrating our class of 2024 graduates. It feels like it's coming fast. I'm not ready, but I know they are. Trust me, we had dinner with a few last night, they're ready. The countdown for the successful end of this amazing school year is in full effect. I can feel it with our teachers, I see it in our students, but it really has been a great year. Last night, University High School got us ready for next football season, holding their spring football game. And tomorrow night at 5:30 at Paul Tyson Field, Waco High, will be hosting their spring showcase. So let me tell you, it starts at 5:30 because they start with a middle school seven-on-seven. And if you didn't get to see it last year, it's really neat to see the future that we're building in the Waco High feeder pattern. So come out and watch the middle school seven-on-seven. The spring game will be at 6:30, and then an alumni seven-on-seven is at 7:30. So it's a full night at Paul Tyson tomorrow night. Also tomorrow night, if you have, if you prefer to be indoors, who knows what we like, and the Fine Arts are Your Things Spring Orchestra Concert at UHS at 6:00 P M. Saturday night, C C M S will perform the musical Newsies for everyone's entertainment. On Monday, May 20, in addition to celebrating trustee Grant's birthday.
Hey, Mr. Grant, happy birthday.
A little birdie let me know that it was his birthday, so I'll say, I'll point the finger that way. And that, that evening, Monday, May 20, at 6:00 P M., Waco High School Encore Choir will be performing at the Ball Performing Arts Center. I also saw that they'll be featuring tennis and middle school choir students. So you get a two-for-one if you come out that evening. Tuesday, May 21, we will be celebrating our 20, or 2023-2024 outstanding teachers with a luncheon event beginning at 11 at the Texas Sports Hall of Fame. The following day, we return to that venue for our luncheon honoring our retirees. Wednesday, May 21, and Thursday, May 22, are our final days of school for the school year. Both are early release days. So make sure your, your friends that are parents as well are tracking that both those days are early release days, and then there's the Friday.
Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday. I'll get that corrected. Noted, noted. So on Monday, May 27, the district holiday in which we will be observing a very special day for Memorial Day and honoring those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. You can also have a slice of cake for trustee Grant that day.
Goodness.
Or whatever, whatever his favorite celebration treat is. The following day, Tuesday, May 28, we will not have students, but we will be celebrating one of our much-awaited, you know, as Dr. Kincaid said, an honor, the first of our 2022 bond program. We will dedicate a building, and that's the G W Carver. I know we are all very excited. Wendy and her team, along with Principal Wooden, are planning something really special and involving a lot, and also our alumni group. So I look forward to dedicating that facility with you all on Tuesday, May 28, the day after trustee Grant's birthday. Yes, ESER noted, noted. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, the board will go into closed session at 7:12 under Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.072. No decision, no action will be taken when we come back. Great, we are coming back in from closed session at 8:30. No action will be taken, and we are adjourned.